Right. Call to order of the town of Montezar Planning Board meeting for June 8th, 2022. Welcome aboard. We are still in hybrid territory here where we've got obviously online and in-person attendance. In person, I'll make introductions. We've got myself, Chair William Hanley. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller. And then online, we've got Meredith Randolph, Kristy Anastasia, and Dave Ashmore. And is Gloria on here? Any chances that 610 number? We've got Gloria Kunjay. She's an alternate member. I don't see her online yet, but Gloria, if you do join us here shortly, welcome aboard. And Kristy, do we even need to do the Zoom spiel anymore? Maybe, maybe just-
I hope not. I can. So hopefully, everyone who's on this call has zoomed at some point during all of this. But if you have not, welcome to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting. If you're out in Zoom land, please make sure you are muted when you are not speaking, because you might have a high hot mic and we will hear everything that you're saying. Plus, your noise might disrupt the meeting. There is a chat function, if you can find that on your Zoom interface. You can sign in. That's the only thing we use the chat function for is put your name there so we know who the participants are. Especially like, I'm not sure who the phone number is that ends in 2811. It would be good to have you sign in because we don't have an idea of who you are. If you have something to say or bring to the board, be recognized by the chairperson. I don't use the chat for chatting, even though that sounds like it's what it's for. And I think that's it. There isn't, there is a technology in the room that will follow people who are speaking. But if you need something, you can raise your virtual hand or wave your hand and or turn on your camera and we will recognize you. So thank you.
Right, thanks. And Margaret, I think actually you're a first that when we've had someone in person and online simultaneously.
Me as well.
Yeah. All right. So first item tonight, we've got a approval of minutes from the 11th of May. And let's see, Dave was there, Meredith, Kristy, Tracy, and myself.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of, what did you say, May 11th?
May 11th. Anastasia, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. All right. Let's soldier on. And you gotta bear with me as I read through this. So Gloria's here. Welcome aboard, Gloria. Good to have you, Gloria.
Thank you. Hope everybody's doing well.
We are rolling right through. We just approved minutes and we're getting into item three on the agenda now. So again, bear with me. So tonight, we have item three, conditional use approval application. It's OO8, 2022. Our name is Mount Desert Land and Garden Preserve. Agent is Tate Bushell, Director of Natural Lands. Location is off Peabody Drive, tax map free, lot 67, zone is rural woodland, three and stream protection. And the purpose is section 3.4 excavation or filling greater than, less than 50 cubic yards. It's a trail restoration project along Jordan Stream over at Little Long Pond. We had a site inspection at four o'clock that Tracy and Meredith made it to. And was this one advertised and abutters notified?
This was advertised in the May 26th, Mountain Desert Islander and Ellsworth American. And the abutters were notified by letter dated May 23rd, 2022. And this encompassed six abutters.
Right, thank you. And Meredith, would you care to report on the site visit today?
Sure. We went all the way up to the bridge in a little motorized four-wheel buggy. And then hiked down underneath the bridge, a good ways down the trail to where the trail at times is actually level or lower than the stream, but there's a good amount of land. You know, there's a bit of land. It's not like the necessarily the river floods the trail, but it's down into, it gets too wet because it's, the trail follows right along the stream. And so their idea is that they're in this sort of bowl area, they're going to cut the trail to follow the hillside and kind of stay up high so that that there's dry trail rather than being so affected by being right next to the stream. And Tate was telling us that that is, you know, naturally, people tend to want to walk on the flat area. And so next, right alongside of streams is a common place, I guess, and actually where where the water pools, because it tends to be flat. But then when the rainy seasons come, those areas become wet. And so the idea to sort of cut a shelf into the side of the hill with a slight pitch to it so that it sheds water and allows the trail to, to remain dry. And then we walked back out and into the park, just the little ways. And they, the park has done the same thing in a section so we could see exactly what it looked like. But it's, I think you, it's pretty easy to envision just sort of cutting, cutting a trail in parallel with the slope of the hill. So we had a nice little hike.
Sounds like it.
Tracy?
No, well, the portion of trail that was in the park that we observed appeared to be very stable and had some, I can't think of what it's called, Meredith. Some, some netting, sort of a little bit of retainage, but not much. It would then sort of become naturalized, helping keep the, the downhill edge of the path sort of sturdy. But it looked very simple and it looks very generally naturally occurring. It's a good effect.
Tate, I'll turn it over to you then.
Okay, thank you, Meredith. Good recap. I think you hit most of the main parts there. Is there, Bill, is there anything that I should, what would you like to hear from me at this point?
I mean, maybe just an overall summary about it. It sounds like Meredith hit most of the main points, but just from the land and garden preserves perspective.
Okay, sure. Okay, it's Jordan Stream Path and where we're situated is kind of directly south of the Cobblestone Bridge. What makes the trail super awesome is it's right next to the stream and so you have great views. It's just really romantic. But what's bad is that in some locations and the particular location we looked at today, for about 100 yards or so, it's really close to the stream, like really close to the stream and/or kind of below the stream level. And so during high water events in the spring, in the fall, the trail gets more and more eroded because the stream basically takes over the trail. And so what we're, what we're dealing with is just like a deeply rutted trail section that gets more and more rutted every year. And so, you know, from our perspective, it's not really all that great for the trail because it's just getting worse and worse. But really for the stream, there's a source on the, that is the trail, there's a source of sediment that just keeps on getting pulsed into the stream every time there's a high water event. So we see it as a stream erosion issue essentially. So yeah, the idea is to basically take the stream, the trail from where it is for this 100-yard section and put it up on the nearby hill slope, which is roughly 70 feet away from the, from the water. And do what's called a bench cut is what Meredith was describing, which is, you know, a common thing that trail builders do all over the country and all over the world, what the park does. And that's about it. And so we, the plan is to do it by hand. So this is a couple of staff members with shovels and buckets and whatnot, kind of slowly moving materials around. So no machines. It's kind of hard. We don't really ever measure the exact amount, but I would say it's definitely less than 50 cubic yards for sure, but somewhere in the order of like five to 10 cubic yards. And that's, I do have some photographs that people would like to see it, but that's all there really is to say about it. I think unless there's specific questions, I'd be happy to take it.
Right, well, ask if there's any questions, comments from the public on this. Okay, none heard. We'll close public comment and we'll soldier on here. So first, first item tonight then with this is we've got to find the application complete.
Anastasia, make a motion to find the application complete.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a second.
All right, all those in favor, Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Hanley, aye. And then anybody think about another motion we might want to make?
I can make a motion to use a short-
Excellent motion.
I'll say another one.
All right, all those in favor, Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Hanley, aye. Short form it is. And then we do our little circuitous thing where anybody care to approve the application?
I make a motion to approve the application.
Anastasia, second.
Right now, we press the pause button and we go through the review of the application. So I've got the short form checklist in front of me. We're going to go through section 6A, B, C, and-
Did we discuss whether it was properly advertised and all that stuff?
Yes, yep. And we do have to do 5.9 because it's, because it's in the, because it's in stream protection, right? So I do, I do have 5.9. All right, so I've got the application in front of me and following along with that, I've got the short form checklist and let's wade through it. All right, 6.1 compatibility. Application talks about it's, you're relocating 300 feet, it's a section of existing trail. They've got an attached map. There's no other structures around and it's a vacant lot. See application. Erosion and sedimentation control. They've talked about that on page two of the narrative. See application, 6A3 highway safety. And they, impact on town services. And they, land suitability. They've got the Hancock County Soil Survey, survey specs. See application, lighting outdoors, not proposing any lighting. And stormwater management. They talk about that in the application narrative again. 6A8 vegetation. They say NA. Not really, you're not really impacting any vegetation. You're just restoring the existing rutted trail, right Tate?
I think it's safe to say that there's like, I don't know, five or 10 trees that may, that may come out and they're probably, well, they're all smaller than six inch DBH, so small trees may get affected.
6A9 dust fumes, vapors, odors, and gases. Atkins says, NA, the findings and factor presented by the applicant and that the conclusion was that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section 6A, which the standard has been met.
I so move.
Anastasia, second.
Right. Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Great, moving on, 6B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. So 6B1 agriculture, NA, 6B2 air landing sites, NA, 6B7. Why we are here tonight, that's excavation. And they again describe the project in the narrative. See application, 6B8 fences and walls, NA. And then on the checklist, it jumps to sign regulations, NA, 6B18 wireless communication facilities, and a 6B19 animal husbandry, two, and a 6B20, you're not proposing any food trucks, are you Tate? 6B21 rooming house, NA, and 6B22 hotels and motels, NA. So the findings of factor that the proposed use include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section 6B except for 6B7. The conclusion was that section 6B is not applicable except for 6B7, for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
She frozen, maybe?
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Right. Since we're adjacent to a stream and we technically are in the shoreline zoning standards, we're going to go through section 6C. So 61 agriculture, NA, 62 archaeological sites. They've attached the map. See application. And then it jumps to 65 essential services, NA, 66 parking areas, NA, 67 is marine and freshwater structure performance standards. And a 69 roads and driveways. And a and 611 water, water quality. There they talk about the portion of existing trails being relocated further away from Jordan Stream. So see application, the findings of factor that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section 6C except for 62 and 611. And the conclusion was that section 6C is not applicable except for 62, 62 and 611, for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And myself, William Hanley, aye. Right. And then since we are in the shoreline zone, we've got to go through section 59. So bear with me as I follow along here on the checklist. So, all right. 591 will maintain safe and healthful conditions. See application, 592 will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. See application. 593 will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater, NA. 594 will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. See application, 595 will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access inland and coastal waters, NA. 596 will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. See application, 597 will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. You guys are not in the shoreline commercial district, so NA. 598 will avoid problems associated with the floodplain development. See application, and is in, 599 is in performance with the provisions of sections 6A, B, and C. And the standard has been met. So the findings are fact are see above, and the conclusion law is all requirements for section 59 have been met.
I so move.
Second.
Oh, I got it. All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. There any permit conditions to this?
DEP approval. Not, if I'm not sure, I think you got it. Hey, did you get, you got DEP approval, right?
Correct, yes, I did, Ken. Thank you.
Okay. No.
So no permit conditions. So then let's circle back and press play on the approval vote. And then I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the application, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristy?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Tate.
All right. All right, bear with me again as I read aloud. So item four on the agenda tonight, we have a land use zoning ordinance, section 6B11 lots access. So what that talks about is that lots created on or after June 6th, 2015. No lot created on or after June 6th, 2015 shall be built upon or otherwise developed unless it has a private road or driveway for access to a public way by valid right-of-way benefitting the lot or by ownership of land abutting the public way. If more than two lots are accessed by the same private road, then it must be, meet the street design and construction standards of section 5.14, the subdivision ordinance. If no more than two lots are accessed by the same private road or driveway, then it must be either the said street design and construction standards or the driveway construction standards of section 6B6 of this ordinance. A pre-existing primary access drive that serves up to two existing lots need not meet the requirements of section 6B6. All such lots must maintain safe access for fire, police, emergency vehicles as determined by the code enforcement officer. In determining whether lots maintain safe access, the code enforcement officer may seek the guidance from the fire chief. And then this, under the subdivision ordinance, section six waiver and modifications of this ordinance, 6.1.1, where the board finds that a private road providing access to a lot or lots cannot meet the street design and construction standards of section 5.14 because A, the application of land use restrictions would prevent the work required to bring the, an existing road into compliance. Or B, the physical conditions of the site renders strict compliance impossible, then the board may waive such standards. And it continues on to say, however, in such cases, the board must find that A, the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as, as is feasible. B, the proposed plan will provide safe access to and from the property. And C, the proposed plan will allow for access to the site for emergency vehicles. And tonight, we have property owners Timothy A. and Jean A. Taylor. Agent is Margaret Jeffrey. Property locations, By Berchway, Northeast Harbor, tax map 25, lot 39. The zone is Village Residential 1. And the purpose is to request a waiver of the street design and construction standards of section 5.14 of the subdivision ordinance for an existing private road. And all for a future land division. We had a site inspection at five o'clock today. And was this one advertised and abutters notified?
So I know that was advertised in the May 26th on the, in the Mountain Desert Islander and the Ellsworth American. I would suspect that the date to the abutters would be May 23rd, but I don't know that because I don't, it's over there somewhere. And there were 10 abutters notified. Yes, the notice was May 23rd.
And we had a site visit at five o'clock, which Meredith, myself, and Tracy attended. And perhaps Tracy would like to report on the site visit.
I'll give it a try. So this site visit is specific, is specific to Berchway. The Taylors wish to divide their lot and Berchway is, is a, I can't see in here. It's it's a pleasant width road, 23, 20 feet. And it has beautiful trees that make a sort of canopy above it. And it's a very nice little neighborhood. Everything is rather close together, but in a pleasant way. This, the proposal here is to bring the lot that will be divided into compliance. There is a proposed hammerhead at the, the end that's closest to the, to the terminus of Berchway. And it seems as if the neighbors are all in favor of this solution with the hammerhead. And the police chief has given his blessing by letter, which we have in our pocket, our packet, fire chief. And that's just about all I know.
Meredith, anything to add?
Um, I don't think so.
All right.
How about you, Bill?
You know, I, you know, of all the years of being on Summit Road, I'd never been back there. And I have to tell you, it's quite lovely at the very end back there. And you know, it's Berchways paved all the way back to this lot. You know, it's there was some real estate back there for the, for the hammer- There was some real estate back there for the, for the hammerhead. You know, it's got this twenty foot right, right away going all the way back in. The fire chief mentioned about the vegetation maintenance where they've got to have the fourteen and a half foot, uh, horizontal and vertical clearance. And it looks like there just needs to be a little bit of tree trimming.
Oh, and then the entrance way, the, the slope of the, of the road is within, um, allowance.
Yeah, that was one question that came up about just transitioning from Summit Road to Birch Way. If that grade was within, um, standards and it is, and was not an issue for the fire chief.
I'm just noticing, um, Bill, that on the map, it, it represents that road like it's a through road, that it goes from one, like it crosses the, um, block. But I didn't see any evidence.
Yeah.
They, they had to put a hammerhead in there to be able to have the fire trucks turn around. And I guess if you looked at the map, you'd think that they didn't need that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, look, it looks like that twenty foot right away goes all the way from Summit Road all to the, you know, far north line of that new lot thirty nine one. Yeah, and, and maybe that's the segue, uh, we'll turn it over to Margaret to take it from here. And. Margaret, you're on. By. Yeah. Yeah, that's. The screen share is really helpful.
Do you want me to leave?
You just gotta mute yourself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll speak loudly, is that right? So we'll pick it up on that.
Yep.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, I, you can see on the computer, um, the survey plans of the property. My name is Margaret Jeffrey. Uh, I represent Timothy and Jean Taylor. Timothy and Jean Taylor, uh, live on this property here. Let's see if I can do this correctly. And they propose dividing this portion of their property off from their house lot and selling this portion as a potential dwelling house lot. The ordinance says, as Bill has read, no lot shall be built upon unless there is a valid right of way benefiting the, the parcel. And since there, and this property is on Birch Way, which is a private right of way. It's a twenty foot wide right of way coming off Summit Street. Here. It, it accesses more than two lots. It actually accesses, I think, eight lots. So it has to comply with street standards in the subdivision ordinance. Street standards would require a fifty foot wide right of way, but this various established road only has twenty foot wide right of way. So we have, are here before the planning board today asking for a waiver from the street standards. In order to, in order to, um, qualify for that waiver, we have to show four things. The first is that the physical conditions of the site render strict compliance impossible. So in order to, uh, meet that standard, we have to prove that we cannot widen the right of way to fifty feet. In order to prove that, we sent letters to all of the butter, the neighbors on the road and asked them, this is the road coming up, ask up to the tailor lot right here. We asked each person whether they would come, allow a widen, widening of the right of way. I imagine that no one is surprised to hear that everyone who answered said, no way. So, um, so we have this constriction of twenty feet going up over Birch Way to Taylor's lot. So, um, the second, um, the, the, the second provision that we have to comply with is that the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as feasible. And, um, one of the factors that we have to show for that is, um, well, actually, I'm not gonna focus on that one. I think we, we are doing that. Uh, the third requirement is that the, um, the proposed plan provides safe, safe access to and from the property. Again, this, um, this property, well, this right of way has provided safe access to all of the abutters, including the Taylors over more than fifty years, probably more like a hundred years. The final requirement that we have to comply with is that the proposed plan allows access to the site for emergency vehicles. And to, um, to make sure that we comply with that, we met with Chief Bender on site about two weeks ago. He raised a few concerns, all of which we were able to relay over time with the, uh, development of this subdivision plan. Uh, excuse me, with this survey plan. One of the concerns that Chief Bender had was turning around any, um, fire, fire trucks, which are up to twenty, thirty six feet long. So he required that we provide this hammerhead turnaround with fifty feet in this direction and that direction. So the surveyor developed a hammerhead that would allow for turning around. The other requirement was that this curve, I think it's actually this curve, be fifty feet, a fifty foot radius. Uh, another requirement and concern that Chief Bender had was at the very beginning of the road, there's a quite steep rise. And, uh, we thought that it might come up against the twelve percent grade that is the maximum required, uh, the maximum allowed. And in fact, the surveyor found, and I think we can see it here, that the grade is, uh, twelve, it's a twelve percent max and the existing grade is actually ten feet. Um, I, I asked the surveyor for, um, a bit more, it's here, um, specification. He says, from the intersection of this, of Summit Road, the first one hundred feet or so is the steepest grade. And where, I don't know, I can show that. Uh, and he says that e, that steepest grade is under, just under ten percent is what he said. So. So. We, um, with those conditions met, the fire chief did, um, say that the, this survey plan is acceptable for emergency vehicle access as presented. So given those circumstances, we asked that the planning board approve this, the variance or, um, I guess you could, approve the variance that the Taylors are requesting.
Can I just ask a question?
Go for it.
Um, the, the hammerhead right of way just ever so slightly cuts out of the right of way and across the lot that the Taylors wanna keep. And it just seems like, uh, if it can just, it's probably just following the way that the road actually is. Uh, it just seems like we come across and those little things can end up in the future with different owners being somewhat problematic. Is it possible to just run a little further and keep it in the right of way until it gets on the lot?
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
I guess I don't understand the question.
So Margaret, there's a tiny little triangle of the, um, of the hammerhead right here. That's outside of existing twenty foot right of way. And when you create this new lot, um, that's on the new, on the remaining lot. And I think what Meredith's saying is just, couldn't we just snug it back into the right of way and keep that clean?
I see what you're saying.
Either that or the Taylors can, can widen the right of way in that area. When it's needed, yeah.
Could do that.
Cause it goes across their lot.
Yeah.
If they wanna keep it in the same location of the existing, then.
Whichever way, just clean it up a little bit.
And with that, I'll open it for public comment to anybody cares to say anything. Margaret, can you put the site plan back?
Kicked off. So you're talking about this little triangle down here?
Yeah.
And, um, procedurally, what would that mean as far as, um, how we go forward today?
Well, maybe there's, uh, if we get that far, maybe there's just a permit condition that the right of way is pulled back into the twenty foot right of way within the remaining portion of the Taylor lot.
Or they widen it.
Or they widen that.
Just for that triangle section.
Gordon, I'll put you on the spot, but, um, just I know your house is probably as the closest proximity to the twenty foot right of way. And just wanna make sure, you know, you're, you had any questions or comments about the proposal here?
Thank you. Uh, we, as, as Margaret indicated, we were not in favor of widening right of way any further. The only other comment I would make is that, uh, and I'm, and I'm sure everybody who lives on Birch Way knows that over the years, as more people such as ourselves and wanna move in, there's, there's more traffic. It's a, it is essentially a one lane private road. Uh, there are occasions when some of us meet each other, someone coming down Birch Way and someone about to make the turn off Summit to come up. I don't know that there've ever been any accidents or anything like that, but there has been, I guess, okay. But that's a, that is to me a potential, um, increased safety issue. Doesn't relate to the proximity of our property to the road and our driveway access. We can't widen that, that road or the radius particularly, given the pitch, uh, going up the birch. So I would just wanna mention that, 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 uh, you know, increased traffic is something to keep an eye on.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. Tippy Genie's lived there forever and ever. And they, we, we wanna develop that all the years, years, years in heaven, now they wanna do it. And the only stop room is what the town has done since it's been there. The town had restricted it. It wasn't restricted fifty, sixty years ago. We could have done it then. So I put it on to the town, making them have to do this. And it, and it shouldn't, it shouldn't happen, it should be great, I'm trying to say. So I'm in favor of it. You know, I don't know, increased traffic, maybe there would be, but, I mean, I don't think that's, I don't think that's an issue. I understand what Gordon's saying, but I don't think that's a big issue. We start, I start for Gordon, he starts for me. Uh, we've never had a collision here, you know? Or, or words.
I'm glad it's all working out. Any other public comment?
I live on Southern Gate, I live next door. Um, on number two Birch Way. And, um, I would love to be, to say that the Taylors, if they wanna have this land developed. But I'm also worried about the traffic going up and down, the trucks, the building material people, the cement people, all that is going to create sort of a, I believe, a bit of a problem. But I could be wrong. And obviously, we're, we're not in favor of widening the road. That's, and that is a no greater because it would be horrible. And I just worry about the traffic going up and down if they do indeed develop those two lots.
Yeah. Gordon?
If I can just make one further comment, um, I just wanna be clear that we definitely support waiver of the ordinance so that the road is not widened and the Taylors are able to do this subdivision. And my understanding is that the planning board cannot put any types of sort of restrictions on that rate or conditions on that waiver. But I guess I would request, and essentially echoing what, uh, Southern Gate mentioned, we've, all of us who are on Summit have experienced, uh, a, a, a number of years now of major house construction. And, uh, some of the issue for us who are right on the corner of Birch Way and Summit has been a construction work beginning at very early hours all year long. Uh, so I guess I would make a request that should all this go forward at some point, that there would be, uh, the, the ability to make a request to the town, maybe as part of a building permit or a construction permit or something to limit the early hour that traffic, trucks, et cetera, could be going up Birch Way.
Can't do that.
Can't do that?
No, we have no ordinance on start of construction, no noise ordinance.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Taylor.
When Mr. Beck did his house, when Sylvia did her house, we put up with what they went. Captain, just long. Didn't say anything.
Fair enough.
I didn't hear that, what was that? I couldn't hear that.
Mr. Taylor?
You wanna repeat it?
When you had your house built, we put up with the guy that built your house.
Right.
And it wasn't always good.
Well, you were up farther.
Yeah, but we had to come down the road and back up it. And they blocked the road.
Well.
They showed no.
So, so what I'm hearing is that the, the importance of maintaining access on Birch Way is obviously paramount. And that where, um, and that the condition of Birch Way, you know, as we observed on site today is, is, it's in good condition. I mean, it's paved. And. And just for the record, you know, the public comment has been that, you know, hopefully as things progress down the road and whatever happens in this back lot, that the access along Birch Way is maintained and that. and that obviously the condition of Birch Way is maintained. And I would think that would be the, a primary obligation of the future owner of that lot and their activities there. And we don't, you know, that's not in our purview of review tonight, but just thought that should be stated for the record. And with that, any further public comment?
Can I ask a, a quick question? The, because the town map looks like it goes through as we started off with. The survey certainly doesn't look like that that's an option, but it, is there, uh, it says it's Taylor Way on the other side. You know, if, if this is a problem to people, is that an option of, of actually completing that? Rather than putting in a hammerhead, make the link from Taylor Way to Birch Bay or Birch Way.
May I comment about that?
Sure.
I don't know about that right of way and whether it does go through. But I do see that the survey plan shows a wooden fence right here. Do you see it?
Yeah.
It looks like it partially blocks the right of way. The laws around rights of way and blocking them and whether you can keep on going through is, uh, not going to talk about it now in this context, but, um, that is there.
I think we're, that's a good question, Meredith. I think we're kind of orbiting out of the known universe, though.
Yeah, I was just the one, you know, there seem to be a few concerns. I don't see any way to address anybody's concerns. I mean, they've got to build up a lot at the end of this road. Nobody's objecting to it. There's, there's some concern, but I don't know unless, you know, it would, it would address people's concern if it was maybe a through road. But that's not up to us to explore. It doesn't sound like it obvi- is an obvious option at all, so.
Yeah, I, I think that, and you brought it up again, I think just the primary concern with the plan presented is the small triangle there on the remaining Taylor lot and how that's dealt with. And with that, uh, any further public comment? All right, none, none heard. I'll close public comment and let's get on with it. Because first we need, yes?
We, I guess I, I didn't understand, um, the issue with the small triangle. If the, if the Taylors granted a right of way across their property in that triangle, wouldn't that satisfy?
I think it would, Dave, it's just not indicated on the plan yet.
Yep.
And I don't, I don't know if that needs to be a a permit condition here or, um, or a condition of approval if we get there, um, but.
I would think just to clean it up, whichever direction they want to take it. You know, they're going to build the hammerhead, it looks like to me. So, I would have thought the easy route would be to build the hammerhead just a little, a little curvier. But they can do it by granting the right of way. I think we can just put it a permit condition that whichever way the character, it just needs to be cleaned up.
Agreed. All right, well, first, um, I guess we got to find if the application is even complete to, no? No?
It's just going to go through.
Doesn't matter if it's incomplete or not.
Well, I mean, like you said, you can ask them to modify, but you're going to look at these conditions, you know, under six one one.
Yeah.
A, B, and C.
Well, first, it's, um, don't we have to vote if we're in the the realm of section five point one four?
You mean like if this road serves more than
Yeah.
three or more lots, it's a road and therefore it has to meet the street design and construction standards?
Yes.
You can, because it's that section six B eleven is referencing that to you.
Yeah, because, so we, you first need to have a finding from the board that, you know, it's, you know, it is serving more than two lots and it's, um, because of that, it's going to bump us to six point one point one. And thus, we have to go through the criteria there, there.
That's a fact. I'll make that a motion.
All right. Sounded like Tracy seconded that.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Christie.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Okay, so now we're, we're in six point one point one territory and in six point one point one, the, you know, the the first condition where it can't meet the street design and construction standards of five point one four, it's because the physical conditions of the site really render the strict compliance impossible. And, um, because of that, then we, um, you know, we can consider a waiver of such standards and.
You've got emails where people have denied, you know, the request to widen right of way to the fifty foot requirement on this five fourteen. Therefore, you can't widen the road of the right of way.
Right, so we should really have a, a finding of the board on that.
Make a motion that, that due to, uh, many neighbors not being willing to widen the right of way, strict compliance isn't achievable.
Anastasia, a second.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Aye.
Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. And then, um, because of that, then, um, we have to find that the proposed use, um, plan, the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as is feasible. The proposed plan will provide safe access to and from the property. And the proposed plan will allow for access for emergency vehicles. So, I mean, the proposed plan brings it in compliance as much as feasible as their, providing the, uh, um, request required, uh, hammerhead turnaround on the, at the termination of Birch Way on the to be divided lot. You know, the, the proposed plan does provide safe access to and from the property as Birch Way is is still a, uh, uh, what do we want to say, like a a longstanding, existing, well-maintained travel way?
Paved even.
Paved even, yeah. Yeah, when's the last time we had that? And that the proposed plan will provide for access for emergency vehicles to which, um, we have the letter from Chief Bender. Saying they can get back in there with just some minor tree adjustments and the introduction of the hammerhead.
And the grade at the entrance.
And, and that the grade of the entrance is within the, um,
Twelve percent.
The twelve percent allowable grade.
Was there any need for cutting of vegetation? He always seems to want vegetation cut.
Yeah, I think, I thought he mentioned that. A little bit.
Yeah.
This shall include vegetation clearance that would meet the current, um, Luso.
You said for fourteen five clear.
Yeah.
Above and on the sides.
They've got to trim it and trim anything that, it felt like it was pretty minor. And Mr. Taylor, you understand that, they just need the fourteen and a half foot clear travel way horizontally and vertically the whole way. Whole way back. So, if anybody cares to take a stab at a motion, feel free.
Can we not use what you just said as a motion? Went through A, B, and C.
He's certainly may, as long as you make the motion or someone else does.
I'll make the motion that you just made. But I'll make it my motion. I guess I'll state it all over again. I make a motion that the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as possible through the use of a hammerhead and cutting vegetation. B, the proposed plan will provide safe access to and from the property as it has for many years and it's a paved right of way. And C, the proposed plan will allow for access to the site for emergency vehicles due to the proposed hammerhead being added to the property.
And the grade and, uh.
Oh, right, and the grade. But that's not a change, that's just the, the grade is, was.
This, they're certifying that it doesn't exceed the max. And that was a concern with Mike Bender.
Okay.
Do you want to use the word possible? You said the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as is possible. Um, the language is feasible tonight.
Yes, I suppose anything's possible. It's just they're doing what's feasible.
That's it, I'll second Meredith's motion with that change from possible to feasible.
Sounds good. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. What else?
You're going to say anything about that?
Oh, and then, yeah, and then we should probably have the permit condition about them cleaning up the little hammerhead triangle.
Put a variance that the, the hammerhead needs to stay within the right of way until.
The access drive, access road portion that goes over Tim Taylors, that's outside the twenty foot right of way.
Right, so he either has to make that the right of way or he needs to move the hammerhead. So, wouldn't just saying that the hammerhead needs to, the access to the lot needs to stay within the right of way?
No, the hammerhead is on the lot that's being conveyed or created.
Right.
It's the access road portion that goes over Tim Taylors.
Oh, I saw that as part of the hammerhead.
Hammerhead's on the very end. He could also grant an easement too.
Oh, okay. Yeah, he can do it whichever way he wants.
Margaret will figure it out because she's a lawyer, so she'll make it legal.
But the, the condition of the waiver request is that it either goes back into the, we put, they pull it into the twenty foot right of way or they create an easement for it. So, we probably should have a finding on that.
What, how do you want that phrase? Have we phrased it?
Well, let's just, let's just have a board finding on that. So, let's get a motion that we have a condition on the waiver request that the the access road extension is either within the twenty foot setback right of way or there's an easement created for it on the Taylor lot.
I so moved.
Perfect.
Anastasia, a second. Let Dave get that.
Say as, as on the plan dated.
As on the plan dated.
It's April twenty fourth, but it's been revised June second, two thousand twenty two.
As indicated on the plan revised June second, twenty twenty two. Dave?
Yes.
The motion, Dave seconded it. So, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Then do we need like a final vote to grant?
That you're going to grant the waiver.
So, then we need a final motion to grant the waiver request.
Anastasia, I make a motion to grant this waiver request.
With the permit condition.
With with the permit conditions as noted.
Randolph, I second that.
All right, all those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. I think that's it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Item five tonight, other. Is there any other?
You guys did not have a meeting on the twenty second of June. We didn't get any applications. So, you got the night off?
We need to come in and sign that plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Once we get the plan for Birch, um, Birch, Birch Brook? Yeah, subdivision. You guys need to come in and sign it. Because I got a timeframe and they also apparently have the sales tab, but we haven't received the plans yet from Greg. So, once we do, we'll let you know they're in the office. Um, and then also the approval we just did, once Heidi types it out, we'll have it ready so that she can, uh, so you can come in and sign it.
And we have to do our.
Now you can do your oaths.
So, it's kind of really hard to hear everything out here.
We just got to, we got to wrap up here really quick, sorry. So, say it again about the signing of that.
The signing of, once we get the Birch Brook subdivision plan, the one about the declaration, um, of covenant language and Greg submits the drawings or plans to us, you got to come right down and sign them because they have a time limit. Plus, with my understanding, they also have somebody waiting, uh, a purchase. Um, and then you got to do your oaths. You got to come to the town office and swear at Claire. I had to do it five times, that's fine.
You got it more than that.
That's it.
All right. I think we're all said. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Anastasia, I make a motion to adjourn.
Tracy seconded it. All those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.